Begin the July 17th, 2017 meeting and our first thing on the agenda is the approval of the June 19th meeting minutes.
No man's motion.
No seconds?
Seconds.
And all in favor?
Aye.
And we have some new business on economic development in the River District. We're going to have a speaker with us tonight, but also we're open for a public comment. If anyone from the public wishes to speak, they can let us know and we'll get them in here. But otherwise, I'll turn it over to Justin.
Now, before we get too far in, I'll need to add item to our agenda, the item C on our new business, what, when we get to a discussion of this schedule and obviously, so...
Because of the eclipse?
Yeah, the eclipse. They added, I think it's a good day to plan. So if you, if there's a motion and a vote by everybody, I'd also add that since it wasn't on the original. Oh my gosh.
I'll say.
And to add this to our new business agenda today concerning the next meeting next month, all in favor?
Aye.
And a vote?
Yeah, well, under our new business, I asked Tommy Dinkins, the county's economic development director, to kind of speak to us today of the potential economic benefit that the proposed River District could have on that district, the new, of all the, just another part of it that we have been discussing with our, the goals that are drafted in the River District plan that's in your packet. And, so...
Nope.
Tommy, Tommy, can you just kind of talk a little bit about it? Just ask him, talk a little bit about this business in general and benefits and...
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of committee, I think most of them, it's good to be here with the town. Yeah, Justin asked me to come by and talk a little bit about the River District, proposed River District, and how that could positively affect the town in the future and the county. I think we all know that, you know, East Franklin and that, the roads leading into town in that direction are really a gateway to Franklin, that and 441 South. And that's, you know, the first impressions are important when you're, when you're building a town, especially in economic development. And I think that there's vast potential for, for some good things to happen in that part of town. There's several groups working in partnership, probably not in partnership now, but there's several, there's several gears in motion that have to do with East Franklin. You've got several groups, of course, you've got the town with the proposed River District y'all have been talking about. You've got Main Spring that are doing some property improvements down there, purchasing some property, doing some Greenway work. You have the county, who owns the Greenway, which is a partner with the town, a potential partner for the town for development apart. And you also have a group called the Nacquosi Initiative, which I'm a part of and several other members in the community. Nacquosi Initiative is a collaborative venture between different groups, the Town of Franklin, the County, Eastern Band of Cherokee Indians, and Main Spring, excuse me, Main Spring Land Trust are main participants in that. It's an initiative to, number one, these folks were brought together to build relationships between the Eastern Band, Town of Franklin, and Macon County, and see how we can work together to improve not only our cultural and heritage history and sites throughout the county and town, but how those can be, how those can be transferred to economic development benefits, economic benefits that benefit businesses in town, citizens, and of course, the partners involved. So the initial efforts for the Nacquosi Initiative will be probably around the mound area, looking at improving some of the mound, working with the town, different groups, Main Spring, and trying to make a really nice entrance into Franklin. Bouncing off that, we're looking at what we call the Nacquosi Cherokee, excuse me, Corridor, Cultural and Heritage Corridor, which goes actually from pretty close to the Georgia line into Cherokee, following basically the river. These are numerous historical and cultural sites along there. And the feeling is that if you take these sites, you can almost tell the story of not only Cherokee, but the early settlers in Macon County. I'm going to pass out a map that shows some of the sites and the investment to date on those sites. You can see, starting down with Testney Farm in Calwea, that, and the investments going north through the Greenway, through the Nacquosi mound site, Needmore Properties, Calwea School, Calwea West Mayo Settlement, Calwea Mound, and Hall Mountain, and then on to Gutters Island towards Soane County, and on to Cherokee. And Franklin especially, downtown East Franklin plays a major part of that, of course, within the Nacquosi mound. There's a feeling that if we can somehow brand, brand this corridor, it'll be a vast economic benefit to the whole area. And give us a brand that tells our history, our local history, heritage and cultural histories. So that's pretty much what the corridor is about. Going back to East Franklin, you know, there's, there's benefit, there's potential for partnerships, for leveraging funding in the future for projects in East Franklin, public private partnerships. Also, if you fit these groups together, you can leverage Greenway, the possible Greenway projects tied into the East Franklin-Nacquosi mound area projects, and pretty much make a real showplace of that River District down there. What it's going to take is, and Justin's worked hard at this, what it's going to take is developing partnerships and a strategic plan of some sort that you can leverage that funding, because there, there is grant funding available for these projects. And I know everyone being aware of government wanting to be conservative and not waste taxpayers money, I think with a good plan, you can leverage the funds to make this a success, East Franklin a success, without overloading your tax system. So that's pretty much it.
Yeah. There's a, you know, talking about the plans or then grants, there's a lot of grants that potentially, if we adopt this plan or this text, and then down the road, hopefully we adopt like a master plan, strategic plan for that corridor, there's, there's, grants run through, seed grants through Commerce, North Carolina Commerce, there's Appalachian Regional Commission grants, there's lots of that. It's not, there's other, there could be other grants that we could find as well, even some more state grants to try to develop this corridor. I think this will, I think a lot of this is, will fall into our number four goal of encouraging the creation of neighborhoods with a real sense of place that is readily identified. This, what is being done with the Nacquosi Initiative, really, it'll be something that is unique to our area and could be very identifiable.
I think as you see, as you see progress being made in East Franklin, particularly even starting with what Main Spring has done, and the new road down there, the new, the new bridge, whatever gets done.
Will it?
It's a snail.
And also, you know, we got people going the wrong way down. Tell me goodbye.
It's, you know, it's also even, even what you, Justin worked hard on giving the bridge live for bike traffic. I mean, that, that's, that's a big deal for the future of East Franklin. And as you develop these, as these developments take place, and remember, it's not a sprint, it's a marathon. You can't do this overnight. It's a long-term project, but I think it's a worthy project. As you, as you develop this area, even this corridor and further improvements on the Greenway, that, that is, that's a draw for, for people to relocate Franklin, that's a draw for businesses and entrepreneurs to go into business, particularly in that side of town. You've got great potential also with the Whitmire property also. You know, there's, I guess, different ways of looking at the Whitmire property, could be public use, could be private use. I tend to think that when you add to your tax rolls, that, that helps the town out. So there's lots of potential, potential in that area town that's really untapped. And I think as, as you see, you know, these initiatives move forward and, and it draws, it draws more investment and more interest. So Justin, I think you're to be commended for, for having foresight as well as planning forward. I would urge you to move on and work with your partners on that, County of Cleveland.
Any questions? So it's Tom.
Well, compared to other communities, one of the strengths or possible competencies to our present UDO that may be blocking or, or helping businesses come into the area that we could look into or focus on, because our primary purpose here is usually land use or zoning primarily, and not really the financing of the project.
Right, right, right. I think the UDO is pretty, I don't think it's a great word, is pretty conservative. I don't think it's overbearing. I don't think it's, you know, I don't think any time you have any regulation, you're going to have some folks not be happy with it. But overall, I think it's, it's a pretty usable and reasonable, compared to, compared to some other communities. Yeah, you may be stay here, probably towards Asheville, Wayne's, where I think it does a lot, a lot of say. I think, I think the town has, has pretty much done a good job considering, you know, to encourage business.
We've got some communities in the state that tell color businesses and how they can paint their houses and repaint their businesses and so on, as it were, so we're really conservative when it comes to that aspect.
I don't, I don't see, I don't see that as a problem.
Have you seen in other communities that zoning or UDO ordinance changes that really boosted economy for them, that work in other communities that we could look at here, that maybe we don't have set up at this point in time? Anything come to mind?
Probably, I don't have any specifics, but maybe Whins will, although Whins will can, but some of their things are a little tighter, might be a little too tight. Whins will seem to have been in there pretty forward.
Question. Does the county encourage or have any programs for, for tax breaks for businesses coming in or relocating?
Yes, we do, we do have an incentive program. It's geared, geared more towards job creation and the amount of investment.
Right.
It's not, it's not what I would call a micro-business kind of incentive program, but it does, for instance, we worked with the Blast Town Beef in West Franklin, providing, providing some, we really can't do grants, we can do, we can do, it almost comes to the tax and tax, property tax forgiveness grant, it equals out to your amount of your property taxes. But we've also worked with Tech Town, so it's this available.
Are we in the economic development in the county seeking to create new businesses, great manufacturing, or any type of business that do create jobs?
Right, right.
Are we doing some coal calling on that?
Yeah, we did coal calling. Most of our time this spring has been spent on tail recovery.
Yeah, just one minute.
And our job, our job one is, is growing what we have. It's a whole lot easier to grow what you got and bring something in.
Absolutely.
You know, another, another success story I think we had, the town's part of this, was Franklin Tea Products in East Franklin. That project, that company was Vietnam walking. And I believe the town and the state and the county are able to see those jobs and now they're experiencing a good amount of growth in the taxpayer. What, what a problem we're having now is workforce, workforce development. For instance, Franklin Tea, there's been looking higher and really is, has, we've working with Commerce's workforce development folks, they're way over, over in our building. And various other groups, we've been able to fill a lot of those jobs, but that is, that is a problem.
To fill jobs? Really? And so no, and if I've got a good reason why?
Well, we got, we got...
Probably not paying enough, that's the problem.
Well, I don't think it's necessarily, I think some of it's got to do with, with qualified workforce.
So in other words, skilled employees or lacking skilled employees or qualified?
Well, we've used a lot, a lot of our skilled employees have already, are already employed, full employment, pretty much, with skilled.
We got a lack of education or something?
No, I don't think it's necessarily a lack of education, because you can get, you can get workforce training immediately through Southwest Community College. Through the, you know, the recession of 2008, we lost some workforce and that, not much, but some of that has remained flat, so...
You did one of those where...
Yeah. And I think that, I think that's a problem that you see throughout many rural areas of the country. The jobs are very, greatly, a lot of the jobs are going to more urban areas around, you know, busy corridors. It makes it a challenge to, for smaller communities.
Challenge. You're a Realtor in this area, isn't it?
Believe me, I've been there a long time, Dave.
Tony, I'll get us back on the subject a little bit. I have a question about the Nacquosi Initiative. And I, if you will know the answer to this, you maybe probably do. Do you know if what they, what their plan is? I know Main Spring has plans for the Simpson Building, and I was wondering if there's been any progress on the Huskisson property? Or if that's too of a controversial?
It's not controversy at all, I just don't know if I'm the right person to ask that question.
Well, I didn't know if, would the Nacquosi Initiative be, would that be something they're looking at, or are they more focused on the corridor itself?
No, no, the, with the Nacquosi Initiative, the initial is, the initial area you would be looking at would be right in the East Franklin.
Right around the mound, so that's...
Because, you know, if you, if you start trying to do something in the whole corridor, you don't have the money to do it.
Right, but just right there where the...
You've got to take baby steps. And, you know, you need, you need a win to start an initiative.
Right.
Even a small win. And that's, that's where the initiative feels like the most potential lies.
Well, I think what Main Spring has done across the street there, if it's Duncan property, is awesome. And if they're, if they're making baby steps, the Simpson Building's next, or the Huskisson property, it's a problem.
Yeah, well, you know, they're, the initiative is looking at various properties down there, how you interact with them. And, you know, it's, it's not necessarily a purchase of property, but, you know, encouraging good development.
Right.
And that's where, that's where the plan for the River District.
In that same line, have you worked with Duke? Because their right of ways is 150 foot.
Right, Duke is, Duke is a major player in East Franklin, as we've gotten them. And they've done some improvements, I mean, with the boat ramp.
And the dog park is allowed there.
And the dog park, and so all this ties together, there's, there's, you can't think of this as the town or the county, there's just a lot of different pieces to it.
A lot of layers.
Yeah, a lot of layers.
Everybody gets it together.
You have to, you have to, you know, part of it, the main challenge is getting everyone together, getting the boat headed in one direction.
All pieces.
And that's what I think the initiative, so far as being successful.
Is there a, is there a committee, or is it a, is there like a director or a lead person of that initiative?
There, there is a board.
A board.
It's a nonprofit. Of course, once I start naming names, I'll leave somebody out, I'm sure, so...
Well, just, is there a...
Barbara McRae is involved with it. She's a chairman. Hope Husky from No One Need a Dicks, from the Eastern Band, or co-chair. There's a representative from Main Spring, Stacy Guffey's on that board, I'm on that board, there's some more, and I apologize.
Don't forget.
I'm not forgetting.
They can look it up.
I read in the paper once where there's some interest in the old Goodyear building there, too.
Oh?
Yeah. That's all I can say about that, man. You'll be first, you know? But it's, it's an exciting project, I think it's, East Franklin's got, the River District has got some great potential right now. I think it's an exciting time to be, to be working on that.
Can you add anything if this comes to fruition, the potential more recreational economic benefits you can see with more fishing, more boating, paddle boarding, kayaking? I mean, right now, it's very slim on the Little Tennessee and Lake Imrie. I could see that as an avenue, if a lot of this, you know, cleaner water and everything, that could...
Yeah, especially along, especially along Little Tennessee. I think there's a good potential for that. You know, Little Tennessee isn't a fast river, obviously, on the south end anyway, but there's a lot of people that enjoy more kayaking, paddle boarding. My wife and I paddleboard on there quite often, not this year, but years past we paddleboard. And there's, there's some other, I think sometimes the Little Tennessee gets a bad rap, because it's really a more fine river than most folks think it is. And I think with some, you know, some initiatives as far as sprucing of, offering more opportunities, I think it's, the river's what makes the best.
Yeah, I think paddle boarding is an avenue that could really be tapped into for our area. All the others have got the kayaking and the rafting, and I, my personal opinion is, I don't think it's smart to be just like the other communities. Then we, then we just kind of blend in, we're not unique. I keep, I keep trying to come back to the uniqueness, I'm trying, I want our district to be unique to us. And that's something I think would be unique. I don't know if anybody tell me, does anybody know of another place you can go within 50 miles and paddleboard?
Not in the city.
Other than what, Bon Henna Lake or something like that, I mean, in a river in the middle of town?
That's right.
So I mean, that's why I think that something like that could be, could be a big booster.
And deliver, you know, more of a snow water.
Yes.
You guys mentioned the bad rap and the need for cleaner water, I mean, how do we change that image? How do we clean water and make people trust that it's not just the dirty little Tennessee river that they've been dropping past for years? But county ordinances on brown fields and landfills.
Yeah, and erosion, stormwater, trying to get more aggressive on our stormwater control and make sure businesses, their waters clean. I've been on NC DOT to map our stormwater drains, so we know where our drains go, and that's something that DOT doesn't even have. I've actually brought that up to them. So, I mean, right now, if a water hits, goes on Main Street, hits a drain, I don't know where it comes out of. So, I mean, that kind of stuff, and just more, more infrastructure, more data, and then even some testing, up here, retesting, and we got a baseline to start with.
When you drive around the county, there's a lot of the ditches next to our roads are plugged up, the culverts are plugged up, the grass is grown over them. And I'm not certain if the property owner's supposed to maintain them or if we're supposed to maintain them, but when it's raining really good, you can drive around and see a lot of water on our roads running down, you know?
Yeah, that's, that's one thing I've learned, it's bad, people are really bad to do it around town, is you don't think anything about it, but even like when people mow, mow the yard, they blow their glass pickings in the road, and that clogs up your storm drains. There's some places that's illegal, they'll find, cities will find you if you do that. Some places in the state, in the state of North Carolina. So there's, there's just a lot, there's a lot of places that we can grow and educate on that kind of stuff. Make our, you know, trash, everybody knows about the trash. County had the big clean sweep, people need to do better about picking up their trash. I mean, it's, it's a, it's a pretty uphill battle, but I think we can, I think we can start to do it, it's doable.
Well, I think, I think what's important with, with the River, East Franklin, the River District corridor is the public increasedness. I think you need to...
Public awareness.
Yeah, public awareness, letting people, you know, have their input, what they think also is what they're important, so it's a great opportunity.
I know we've opened it up for the public to come, just, I think if more and more would come, then we would have a better accomplishment of getting everybody to watch this thing.
That's always a problem. It's easy to find rants, or it's not too easy to find rants.
You got a good source for ranting, right?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I thought, I went to my understanding.
You do that.
Put your name on it.
No, any good questions?
No.
You don't have any more questions?
Is that okay? I'm sure, that might be your last one.
Okay.
I appreciate you coming and giving us this information and if you come up with anything or run into any of these partnerships that have some questions that the town could work with you on, please come back.
Okay. So, and Linda, Barbara, is a great resource, so don't be, use her, Justin comes through, Nacawassee Initiative maybe helps these are resources also. So, you know, whatever, I'd be glad to assist any way I can.
Well, we're gonna need your help and Barbara's help and.
We need everybody's help.
I think we need to just collaborate, all of it. The board of mayor, all groups, everybody, all of the above. Salute Tommy, we appreciate you.
I would like to say, I had the opportunity to meet Josh Carpenter. He is a regional industrial manager for, was it the Economic Development Partnership of North Carolina? I'm sure you familiar with that town?
Yeah, I'm right for Josh all the time.
Okay, yeah, I was like, like to try to get into it, I've been speaking. He spoke at our last Realtors meeting and he was very informative and I asked him a lot of questions in reference to the River District. And I think he can be helpful too, would like to say to build our toolbox there, the places to go to for businesses. And some of the projects actually, I think you guys collaborated on, if you haven't mentioned it.
Yeah, yeah, he's, last, everything's short, he wasn't there for Franklin Tigray, but everything else would.
Yeah, they got more money than us too.
Yeah.
We're really trying to get into schedule and, I give you his.
It seemed like that the, keeping the river healthy is one of the things that the planning board might be in a better position than most other organizations right now. It might be something we need to focus on the brown water and the runoff and the drainage and mapping it and getting that organized. That'd be something that the council members would have to put forward, wouldn't it?
Yeah, yeah, I'm sure anything that can help, I'm sure they would want to do.
Got a lot of industry along the river that probably we should be looking at a little closer.
I wonder, new business, the next, is the next steps in the development at this point, or are we planning to have additional speakers or?
Um, we, I can try, I'll also, we have to see what their schedule look like, so I can't say it's happening here in August or, so we have to see. So that was, if that's what you want to do, is get, have them come and speak. I'd be was, after this, I didn't really have anybody else lined up to come speak, so I was wanting to see if you want to have, maybe try to get another speaker or go into, or go into, now, trying to figure out what we've talked about, tweaking our text and our map. We haven't really talked about the area of the map much. If there's more parcels you want to add or something you want to take out, you know, definition and so on. And then when we said we were going to have a public hearing, let people come, I was going to send out letters to all the property owners.
Respect the fairness.
If you wanted to have that at the next meeting and then after that, after you hear from them, the ones that come, have, then get, kind of breaking it down, you know?
I will say, Josh Carpenter will be very informative and I, you all appreciate the fact that we get to be here. Very important. Quite interesting.
I think it'd be more, I think it'd be just important to have the people come to let us know how they feel towards or what direction they would like to see everybody get to.
What's their vision? Yeah, they have an interest, what's their vision?
Yeah, there's, you know, I mean, put it out on our Facebook page, you know, put the, the planning board meetings out so people know. Made flyers, took out around town, put out so people know, have any come today, I took some, but last time we had some come. Just trying to get more public involvement, so we can all hear from them.
Directly, and maybe the only way we're gonna really get people to show up for the meetings.
Yeah, I think there's about a hundred and seventy something different parcel owners. I don't have the exact count, but it'd be a pretty large mailing, but that was a, one of the goals was to, we were to do that, have a hearing here, which is kind of something we normally don't do, but I think as large as it is was needed. So, so, and then they'll have another hearing once it goes to town.
Ms. Leatherman, I wonder if she could give us a, a map of the power lines, so we could look at the hundred and fifty foot setback and overlay that over the map that we're looking at? Because there will be some areas on there that probably will be just not usable because of that setback. And we can zero in on that a little better.
Yeah, I can see if I can get a copy of that, or Kevin Hall, he might have a copy of it, James Lays a Last Time.
And then the other question for her, I know she did, they did allow dog park to be in the, the right of way because if they can drive through it, it wasn't blocking their trucks. I didn't know if we could think of maybe other things that could be in the Duke right of way, such as food truck parks that could come and go, public bathrooms, additional boat docks, more access roads. I didn't know how Duke would feel about things like that necessarily, I didn't think of it until after the meeting was over last time.
Okay. Yeah, I can reach out and see what the thoughts are, maybe have something for the next meeting.
Well, I'll just think of Justin, what would be, what do you think would be beneficial in maybe forming a council with these people? I mean, you know, we've heard from Ben Lassiter and now Tommy, Mike Bree, Doug Johnson with the Soil and Water, and Barbara McRae from the Initiative and, and, you know, getting a group instead of hearing them individually. Just start, starting a, some kind of council, some kind of big group, you know, to make it firm, like what's our number one next step, what's the next step, I mean, everybody's in town.
I think that could be.
I don't know how hard that would be.
I think that could be achieved if, if it goes, you know, back to the town council and they approve, you know, remember it's a text amendment, a rezoning, a map amendment right now. But if a master plan or strategic plan is developed, that could be the, the steering committee could be some of those individuals of those groups.
But we're not to that point yet.
No, I don't think, I don't think we're to that yet.
What you're saying is just get the movers and shakers together.
We've got to get the movers and shaker. We can't do it by ourselves.
Win the bounty.
We need to.
I was thinking we're just bent on trying to get out of their way, allow them to have it.
Right.
But I, I think we do need a good thumbnail sketch of what, what we see as the vision.
Strategy.
That right, and then they'll get a better sense of what we're coming from. Say we're on the River District, then we're more aware, you know, how we're gonna do.
Yeah. I think you hit a product call when you said you think this is something I did about the mailers, like the hundred and seventy somewhat property owners. We need down to see.
That could be an eye opener.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the idea, I mean, we want to, does it do something and then the property owners, you know, come in and everybody hates it.
Well, yeah.
I think it's, it's got to be proposed right. Or to get by and remember by it.
Otherwise we'll look like Mission Hospital.
Yeah, we don't want that, that's not the intent.
So do you need a motion to invite the public next time or?
I just wanted to make sure that's what you wanted to do next, if that's what you want me to do the mailer and send out letters and.
That'd probably be September, since August is going to be a little bit funny with the planning board week.
Yeah, it might be, if you wanted me to, if you wanted to kind of skip forward, I was thinking about that on the C was, obviously the twenty first is our next planning board meeting, which is the day of the eclipse. And the block party is one to six that evening, so I don't think.
Motion's changed, would you like to change?
Well, you could either change it to the next day on Tuesday, the twenty second, our normal time, or the following Monday, which is the twenty seventh.
Board of adjustments, the second of Monday?
Yes.
If we don't have a board adjustment, we won't look at that?
I would, I would probably urge moving back than forward.
Okay.
I thought, I don't want to feel like, well, they moved it up so we wouldn't know about it or something.
The twenty second?
I think, I think a motion for Tuesday is the next day.
Solid second.
I don't think, let me check right quick, make sure there's nothing going on in the boardroom. I've got it on my calendar here, I want to. I don't have anything in the boardroom on the twenty second. I also don't have, don't see anything in here on the twenty eighth, I told you what the twenty second, twenty eighth, so, either days.
Twenty second?
Second motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second? Call a favor of the meeting time, can we change?
Sure.
Any against? All right. We're working on it, I guess.
So, you want, you want to do the mailers, back, go back to, you wanted to do the mailer, mailings for September, not August, is that we've moved the meeting, or do you want?
These people will know we're supposed to meet anyways, so it doesn't impact the.
Yeah, I mean, it would be in the letter, it would have, be in bold, the time, the place, the address, the day, everything.
Interested in that in August or wait until September?
I think the quicker we do it, since we know what's going on, we'd be glad to do it.
And it's okay if you come the same time, I mean, it informs the public as well.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, it's all good information.
I just want to make sure we give everybody that we've invited a chance to talk, so we're not rushing ourselves. I think we need to hear from the public first and then invite, that's my opinion.
Whatever.
Don't matter.
When we get ten people, I'd say I told you so.
Say that's the problem.
And that's what's gonna happen, but I, I mean, don't put that, don't write that.
Haven't you been inviting people?
Don't write that.
Um, I've been, well, I haven't, of course, the public's, it's always open, but I haven't been doing mailers to, you know, anybody because you're trying to do a hundred and seventy every month, that's postage, it'd probably kill me upstairs if I did that so much every month.
You take that in your pay.
That's why I was trying to save it for one time, that's why I've been doing the flyers, going out in, you know, public places and, you know, where people are going so they can see it and putting it on the Facebook page.
Have people been replying, I haven't been keeping up with it, people replying or commenting?
A little bit, you know, like a lot of people don't understand, they don't know where it is, they think it's, you know, they think it's just more regulation and.
Business got more of a rise than this day.
It should be, I hear that all around town.
That's the, you play kind of like a media for that. Will it be sent to just the property owners or also the business managers?
Um.
I mean, not live in town.
I probably would try to send it to both, like, maybe to see what the total number is, because I know, like, the Hollywood, the Hollywood, East Franklin River Walk, I still buy the Freshwater Shopping Center, it's the River Walk on East, in East Franklin or something. You got one owner, but there's too many business owners there, so, like, something like that, I would try to send it to the actual businesses, set each address involved. So they would come and the property owner.
Absolutely.
Because if you get them supported, then everybody that trades there goes there. And like those, some of them misses where I took some of the flyers, the flyers asking to put them in their windows, so that, some of them, like you already know, like, this is, you're, you're in this, you're be affected, but I don't know if any of those have actually came, so, let's see, I'll, I'll mark the letter though. I'll have a grand total on how many people I mail with next meeting.
You could, you could send us a quick email, you know, how many people on that.
We've been sending us some samples of other communities and some articles, and over this next month, we probably should review those intensively before the next meeting, so we'll kind of have a good overview of what we're listening to.
Did Sylva just start a new district?
No, I don't know.
They're working on a new food truck.
So the place isn't bad.
Okay. Is there any other new business?
No.
You have a second?
Second?
Call a favor?
All right.
It will be adjourned.